So here we are. It is now 6:30. And I call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present, thank you council. Michael Pinkston, superintendent of the Castle Hills Christian School, will lead us in the invocation. Mr. Pinkston.
All right. Merry Christmas, council, and let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for just being in the midst of this meeting tonight. We just invite your presence and your wisdom to rule and reign in this meeting. I want to thank you for the service of this council and here at the end of the year especially to just say, well done, good and faithful servants, and thanks for the hours. I just pray the spouses of each of these folks would, or JR's girlfriend, would just all, just be, get an extra portion of blessing in their life for what they give up for the time that's given to our city and service. Pray your covering over our police force and fire departments, Chief Simons and Chief Dover, just bless them real good. I just thank you for their leadership. Pray for Kurt as he finishes his tenure here. Thank you for his service, his heart, his incredible attitude and example, and I pray his best years are still before him, not behind him. And then for Janet and all the other staff around here, just bless our community. Thank you that we live in one of the greatest little corners of Bear County, maybe the galaxy. So we just love you and thank you for all the goodness that's here. Let your wisdom reign tonight in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Okay. Tim Turner, I haven't seen you in a long time. Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every soul.
Thank you, Tim. Do we have the sign up sheets, please? Just so you know, we do have an executive session tonight, but we put it at the end of the meeting due to the fact that we didn't want to hold up any residents. So whatever time we finish here will be going into executive session. Thank you, Minnie. Okay, it appears that no one has signed up for the citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. So what we'll do is we'll move ahead to the consent agenda, which is item A, acceptance of the treasurer's report and special fund balance ending October 31st, 2017. The acceptance of the treasury report and special fund balance ending November 30th, 2017. Is there anyone who would like to pull any of those for?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull A and B.
Okay, go ahead.
Has council, has council, has the committee had a chance to look at the special funds and the account balances? If you look at the back of October, there are a lot of things here that have to be discussed. Under the SAWs interlocal agreement, there is a notation breakdown is being worked on. This has been absent since August. This is absolutely completely wrong. We have absolutely no idea what SAWs is going to demand of us and what we're going to be demanded of. Yet here we are, breakdown is being worked on. There hasn't been any breakdown of this since, I think, September. We have no idea where we are, not a clue. That, to me, is dangerous. Further up the page, you see major purchases of vehicle, $536,949.17 apparently is what's in the balance. But the total of the fire department and public works number doesn't match the number on the right-hand side. That is $611,000 versus $536 on the right-hand side. I would need an explanation of that, of what is going on.
Okay.
Also, there are several funds, I stopped at three, that are completely wrong. You can first look, pull this up here, the drainage fund. In October, the drainage fund, if we can look at the drainage fund here, if you all will pull that and look for it. In October, there was a balance of $102,000 approximately, then in November, $83,000. And yet, during that same period of time, only $91.55 was put into the fund. I have no idea what happened there. These numbers, I need a lot of explanation. How did we drop $19,000 when $91 came into the fund from month to month? Drainage fund went from $622,000 to $602,000, a loss of $12,000, but there's no indication as to where that $12,000 loss came from. It's my, I think, I'd like an explanation of those numbers and...
Douglas, aren't you the treasurer?
Yeah, that's why I'm, I've been waiting, I've been waiting for about two or three months. If you remember, the last month, I was asking for this last month, and we were told, well, it'll be there next month. Well, this is next month, and...
I would suggest you get with the finance officer and let's find out what's going on, if you're the treasurer.
Well, in the court technology fund, in October, you had a balance of $17,970. And in November, you suddenly have $36,238 when only $566 came into the fund. I don't know what any of these numbers mean. I can't get a grasp on any of these things.
Let's get with the treasurer and find out. You get with the finance officer and find out, and then we'll do that at a time when we can go through each one of these. In the meantime, if it needs to be tabled, until next time, we'll table it.
Well, Tim, the reason this is important, we're being asked to amend the budget. And I think we're asking to amend the budget to a large number here. If we have, if we don't have an idea of where we are right now, and these funds suggest that these numbers are very peculiar, I don't see how we can vote up or down a lot of things on a year-end amendment if we have no, if we don't have an accurate idea of where we are. And these things suggest that these numbers are just, they seem arbitrary, but they're definitely incorrect. One is, one has a mathematical addition of 3,000 when it should have been a subtraction of 3,000, and it goes on and on and on.
Mr. Vandewalde, do you have any comments on this?
No, we can talk about the budget adjustment measure when we get to that agenda item. We will look, I'm not sure why the fire department and public works don't total on the major purchases of vehicle, but we'll look into that. I changed emails with SAWs just this past week. I think we're completely in G and in sync with SAWs on where we are on the budget on that, and I can explain that more when we talk about the agenda item because it specifically ties to that account. With regards to the numbers that Councilman Gregory is seeing, you know, he sees the macro numbers, not the micro numbers that are going into each particular invoice or each particular credit to the account. So we can break those out for the accounts that he's raised and put those before council. For instance, drainage utility fund, we have a portion of the SAWs bills, the SAWs payments that come out each month and go into the drainage utility fund. But we also have some design work that's going on out of our drainage utility fund. If you'll remember, we're, actually, we're at 100% design now for the North Mountain Drainage, and our PS Klotz and I are sitting down tomorrow to discuss it. So there's a lot of stuff that happens inside each one of these accounts that you may not see reflected the individual invoices far. You just see kind of the line items in the budget and what the balance changes are. But we'll be happy to sit down and break them out. I'm confident that, we may have a, you know, I'm confident that we know where our dollars are, and we've been in contact with the auditors to make sure that our balances are right for the amount of money that was transferred at the end of the audit and so on and so forth. So I think...
When was the last time the auditor was out here? It was yesterday?
We spoke to her yesterday. We speak to her probably every other week, maybe Nora is probably on average. And she's come out and helped us go over our books and stuff like that. So I'm pretty confident we're on solid ground, but you're right, Councilman Gregory is the treasurer. If he wants to sit down and go over these numbers, we'd be happy to sit down.
I think it'd be a good idea if he did that. He's can, you know, obviously, it's something that we're all concerned about if the figures aren't right, but he should be more concerned being the treasurer of the city. Excuse me?
Well, let's just, we can just look at one fund, the technology fund. End of October, it was balanced at $17,970. Only $566,000, $566 was registered to going into the technology fund. Now it has a balance of $36,238. Where did that number come from?
Mr. Mayor, instead of doing operational reviews here, it's important, may I offer my services with Councilman Gregory and we could sit down with the finance person to answer some of his questions. I had some questions earlier, and I asked Nora about it, and she answered them to my satisfaction. I didn't go over each fund, I admit that, but I'd be more than happy to if that's all right with Councilman Gregory.
Okay, so done. So Councilman Paul, Councilman Gregory, Nora, if we need to get the accountant in here, let's get her in here. Let's find out what's going on. She, from what I understand, she agreed yesterday over the phone to come in and make sure that we're on the right track. Thank you for pointing that out, Douglas, but we need to get it, you know, we need to get it done really quick.
Yeah.
You're right, if we're, do we have any idea of how much this is off?
I haven't a clue. I mean, after every, I've been waiting a couple of months. All this has been delayed, month after month after month.
That bothers me, Douglas. Why would you wait a couple of months?
Because I asked about it last month.
So you asked about it, and she didn't have it, so you waited a couple of months.
I asked about it last month, and so they have it this month.
Mr. Mayor, what is the function of our treasurer?
Treasurer is, he's actually responsible to, for what goes on there.
Pay the bills?
And, you know, he should be in constant contact with the finance officer. I'm not trying to point Douglas out, I'm just saying, it, to be two months, 60 days out and this come out, it baffles me. Okay, so we pulled items A and B. On the, on the agenda to discuss, do we want to table those items, or do we want to bring them back next month, or?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the acceptance of the treasurer's reports under A and B on the consent agenda to January 9th.
Okay, that's...
Wait a minute, what, January 9th? The next scheduled meeting is the 9th? Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the table by Ms. McLean. Do I have a second? Ms. Scott, thank you very much. This has been all in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Postpone until the 9th. Let's go into old business. And although I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Vandewalde, I'm going to actually ask if we pull this item. Some legal things have popped up about it, and Mr. Vandewalde, please go into detail on what that is and how quickly we can get this back on the agenda, please.
Okay, Mayor. We were hopeful to get a tutorial for council on the message board. However, we, Rob's been working with Civic Plus. We've got the account set up, and we started kind of dry running it with the staff, and there are several areas that we're concerned that if we're not careful, Pika Bulk could go in and publish items and then go back and pull them off, the message board, which would be in violation of the Texas Open Meeting Act. So Civic Plus, that was just one of the areas. But as we were, like I said, kind of red teaming this thing and going through it, it was pretty obvious that we need to go back and do a little more thinking on it, perhaps move to a different platform other than Civic Plus so that fewer people have administrative rights to it because the way Civic Plus is set up, any of our administrators, and we have several on the staff for Civic Plus, would be able to publish and pull items and so on and so forth. So I think we might have to divorce those two platforms and come up with a separate one in which to run this from. So like I said, we were, we were all along, we've been talking with Civic Plus, we shared our rules of engagement with them, we shared the Texas open, or the Texas government code chapter or section on message boards, and they, as we went through them, they said, yes, we can do that, yes, we can do that, yes, we can do that. But as we started working through it last week and this, it, it's not going to be the right platform for us, I'm afraid. I could be wrong, and we may be able to figure out workarounds, what we're finding, but I think we're going to have to go back to the drawing board on this. So just to keep us out of trouble.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go back real quick. Could we please have citizens to be heard on one side and agenda items on the other side, please? Okay, this gets messed up every time, and now we're sitting here. Suzanne Riley asked to speak on the October item, treasurer's report, October and November. So here we are. So please. Citizens to be heard, agenda items, staff. Suzanne, I apologize on the behalf of this city for this mess up, and hopefully you'll get to speak next time on this when we bring it back on January the 9th. Thank you. Okay, so here we are. So you're asking us to pull this item until what date, sir?
Well, again, I think we'll have to do some research. The goal would be to get back on the agenda for January 9th. Rob's going to keep working on it and like to get this back on the agenda because I know council is very eager to get this capability stood up. So we'll get it back on the agenda for January 9th as we troubleshoot it and perhaps move to a different platform.
Thank you. All right. So do we have a motion to put this on the January 9th?
So moved.
Second. Anyone? Frank, you said yes? Second. Okay. We have a, we have a motion to put this on the January 9th meeting. We had a motion, we do not have a second. I'll ask for a second again, please. Okay?
I don't believe this even needs to be an agenda item. Can we have some discussion on it, please?
But there's some legal ramifications on this, and I don't know why we're discussing it, but okay, we got a second, so let's go end the discussion. Douglas? Frank?
No comment. We're told we're not ready to do it yet, so I don't see trying to push this round peg into a square hole.
Amy?
Mrs. Scott first, please.
Okay.
I just have to say, I'm very disappointed that this was passed in July. It's now December. It's not done yet. Once it passed, I did independent research, and almost everyone I spoke with in IT about how long should this take for it to happen, told me approximately 10 days, not this many months to make it happen. So I'm pretty livid that we're now in December and we don't have the proper platform, we don't have the proper messaging board, and it's, it's really not rocket science. It is spelled out very clearly in section 551.006 of the Texas code here. And so the fact that it's taken this long is really made me quite irate, and the fact that we're having to pull it again and go back and look at legal ramifications, there's really no excuse for this. So I expect it to be on the January 9th meeting, and I don't think we need a public tutorial. I think it's, it's very clear who can post, and everyone in the entire city can read. I'm just literally without words. I'm so upset that once again, this has been put off another month. There's no excuse for this, absolutely zero excuse from the city administrators and from our IT department for it to take this many months to get this up and running. There is just zero excuse. So I will second it to put it off till January 9th, but it better happen January 9th as far as I'm concerned.
Trevino?
I understand that Rob's been working on this. I'm not sure where the hangup's been. I'd appreciate if we got it going sooner rather than later, but I would have to defer to Mr. Vandewalde or Mr. Brendan if we're going to hold off because they feel that we're not ready. I wouldn't go against that. Thank you.
Mr. Vandewalde, could you have Kurt, have Rob in your office at 9:00 AM in the morning, please?
I can, sir. I would like to comment, and I do apologize, Councilman Scott, and to the entire council, that it has taken so long to get this stood up. I think it's important from our perspective to do it wisely and not fall into legal pitfalls. First and foremost, to protect the city. Second of all, and I certainly don't want to make excuses, but as you know, we have an IT department of one or maybe one half because Rob's not really a full-time employee. He's a contract. In the meantime, he has completely swapped out every one of our computers on the city's staff. He did that on his own versus having Barcom do this, and he saved us a lot of money in the process of doing it by doing it himself. He has got us lined up. We're almost there. We were to upgrade to fiber on the building because we almost shut down electronically in the afternoons here with the spinning wheel on our computers because so much bandwidth gets sucked up by the neighborhood, I guess. But, so we're moving to fiber. They came out to hook it up, and they had not run enough fiber. So as you know, fiber, you have to pull it all at once, so they're having to pull a whole new run of fiber. Plus his day-to-day, day-to-day operations of keeping our servers up and running, keeping them from crashing. We've also just finished a big inspection of our police department servers that was absolutely critical. It's like a validation that comes out from the Texas DPS every year. So I guess I'm not trying to make excuses, I'm just trying to say it's, you know, everybody's got priorities, and this has, has at times taken a back burner to some pretty high priority items. And I know the council wants, and I think it's a great thing for the city of Castle Hills, and I just want to apologize and just say it's not for, it's not for lack of trying. And I'm confident that we'll get there, so.
So do we need more IT help, is, to help Rob as far as, or was this something that just came along?
It's just been a busy season for him, Mayor, and I agree with Councilman Scott, it's taken too long. We could have probably figured out a way to juggle our tasks a little bit better, but I'll take that one on the chin, not Rob.
Well, I'd sure like to see us get in front of this stuff in the future, instead of behind it, chasing it. All right, so here we are. We have a motion by Mr. Paul. We have a second to move this to the January. We'll meet with Rob in the morning. Ms. Scott, if you'd like to be there, that's great. Anyone who would like to be there is welcome, as long as there's not more than two of you to meet with Rob, get the specifics, and find out exactly where we're moving from here. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor for January 9th? Thank you. Okay, it is unanimous. Okay, under new business item two, consider an act upon ordinance number 2017-1220-A, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 48, vegetation of the Code of Ordinances, raising the height of vegetation on streets and alleys. Mr. Vandewalde?
Yes, sir. As the council's aware, we purchased a new fire truck last week. And by the way, I wanted to say, as we briefed during the council meeting, we were vying with a department in Pennsylvania for that same truck. When we were finished with the meeting, Chief Dover wasn't going to let it slip through his fingers, so we stayed behind the chief, Minnie, Nora, and I, and we submitted the purchase order. The next morning, at 8:30 in Pennsylvania time, which is 7:30 our time, the Pennsylvania Department submitted a purchase order. Had council not approved that, then we would have missed out on that great truck at that great price. So thank you for the decision. But that truck's a little bit taller than our current truck. It's 12 foot 3, and we are recommending a change to the vegetation ordinance to move the minimum tree height over the streets to 14 feet. 13 feet would be sufficient, but a lot of times when we have weather, either rain, or particularly when we had ice and we had all those problems with electricity, that's because those limbs hang down and when they're saturated with that ice and that extra weight that's on them. So we're recommending that we go to 14 feet on the vegetation ordinance. That's the only change in the ordinance. That we would stay at 12 feet over the sidewalks, and that we would, to make this a little more palatable for homeowners, that if residents wanted to pull a permit for tree removal between now and February 1st, it would be at no charge. That's the recommendation. Council can approve or disapprove that, but we just think it would be best to do it that way. Just as a note, that's an incentive because our oak welp period runs from February 1st to July 1st is when people can't cut their trees. We're expecting the truck should be here in about six weeks. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. So we're just asking council to change the approval and the tree height, minimum tree height to the roads to 14 feet.
Let's go ahead and get a motion, and then we'll get a, I saw your brother Dylan, you're on this, so.
So moved.
Second.
Well, Leslie. Well, I'll call you during, citizens, you'll be glad to come up and speak, okay? Okay, we have a motion. It was by Ms. McLean and seconded by Mr. Trevino. We'll come to citizens right after we discuss, and Leslie, I will put you on that. Thank you. Douglas?
Has there, I can think of at least five streets that are heavily covered with oak trees. Has there been any attempt to find, like Prins and Carrollwood, Fox Hall, Garden View, Glen Tower? Has there been any effort to find out whether they're going to have to hack down a lot of oak trees to get this extra two feet? Have you even given that any thought?
We, we understand it's going to be a huge inconvenience to the residents. I would like to also state that every one of the trucks that we were looking at, in fact, the standard today is not what it was, you know, 30 years ago when we bought the truck that we have. So they're all over 12 feet high. So, I mean, we realize it's going to be an inconvenience to residents and that we're going to lose some tree limbs that we love here in the city of Castle Hills, but at some point, you have to ask yourself the question, you know, is it more important to be able to get lifesaving equipment into the homes, or is it more important to save, you know, trees over the roadways, only over the roadways? I would also add, we had a fire on Lou John here a couple of months ago, and I can't, I couldn't count the number of apparatus that we had there from other cities. We had Leon Valley, Balcony's Heights, Hollywood Park, just to name a few, up and down those streets. So we're talking not only a risk to our firefighting equipment, but also risking our mutual aid from other departments coming in to help us when we have those fires. And really, without mutual aid, you're, you'd go out on a pretty long limb there if you're trying to do it all on your own because it is exhausting and takes a lot of resources and manpower when you have an active fire, so.
Douglas, when this came up last week, obviously, this is a, this is huge. I mean, you know as well as I do, it could cost five, six, seven, $10,000 to move a tree. There's, there's no doubt about that. There's, there's no doubt about that. Dover, how much damage was done to our trucks in the past two years?
Sorry. I can't speak to the, the last two years, but I can tell you, in my nineteen years with the city, with our current ladder truck that is actually shorter, uh, in height than the new truck, as well as our engine, which is considerably shorter. Right now, I could, I could take anybody out in the city and, and drive you around in any number of streets. We have low hanging limbs, uh, that are currently hitting the smaller trucks. In my experience, I personally have, uh, had to repair or fix damage to the ladder truck where the pedestal control box that controls the ladder itself or all the hydraulic controls are in the unit itself. We've had to remount that at least three times. The mansaver bar that goes across the back, which is part of the framing that keeps us from falling off the truck, we've actually had to replace and re-screw everything, tap out everything and place that back on the truck at least two to three times. Numerous lights, scratches, different things to the tops of the trucks, uh, over the years.
This isn't fun for sure, uh, and this is, this is a big deal, especially when you get down in the Fox Hall area, you get over in the Mimosa area, over by even Zornia, Colladium, uh, you get in the alleys and I'd, I'd hate to see what's back there. But I think that we ought to, you know, I understand that you're...
If, if I may, as well...
It's kind of a million dollar piece of equipment here.
This is more than just an inconvenience. I understand what you're talking about, but you're going to be radic, it is possible you're going to be radically changing some streets. You're going to be really hacking away at a lot of oak trees.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, they've been there a lot longer than we have. And the, the other fire truck was able to make with scratches and dents, that's true. But this is a lot more than just an inconvenience. This is going to be loss of property value to a degree of a lot of streets that have a lot of, the canopy on several streets is, I hope it's more than fourteen feet, I have never measured it. I was just asking, have you all measured whether there's going to be any impact on any street or not?
We typically go out and do the measuring. We have a large stick that we place at twelve foot. We actually go out and partner with code compliance and we mark the streets. We attempted to begin this, uh, we've done it in stages over the years. At one point, we were marking streets and, um, I wasn't privileged to the information, but somebody was upset that we were marking trees and, and asking that they be trimmed to the, what our current ordinance suggests. And we were instructed to quit, cease, don't go out and do any more streets. We began doing again, um, at the end of this last year. As we were doing that, we realized as we were looking at the new fire trucks that we were going to have to go up to a higher, um, a, a greater height to accommodate the new truck. So we stopped until we could better, you know, find out how tall this truck was going to be and move forward with that. I will say the current fire code that we have adopted, uh, the current fire code states that all trees should be at thirteen-six. So we don't even, we're not even in compliance with our current fire code. We agreed that fourteen would be kind of a, a good number to prevent, um, and we just saw it recently with the ice and then the heavy rains, we tend to have a lot of sag with our, our heavy limbs. I do know about ten years ago, truck seventeen, that is the fire station located at Jones-Maltzberger in four-ten, they had a platform truck that actually struck an oak limb and did thirty thousand dollars damage to the truck itself because it took out part of the platform. It had to be sent back to the manufacturer in Florida and was out of service for months. And that would be my, my greatest concern. The monies that it would cost us to do the repairs, the amount of time the truck would be out of service, and then on a bigger scale, us not being able to get that equipment to the scene to effectively do our job, save somebody's life, things of that nature.
Thank you. We through, Douglas?
Yes.
Before I go on to Mr. Paul, you know, when this, when this came across, this brought up so many, and, and I'm not so sure whether we can actually just indiscriminately just, just do this right now. I mean, we may have to get with you and, because I, I know what it's going to cost, and it's going to cost a lot. And not only that, but I would sure hate to be the council and mayor that because we didn't fix a tree and we couldn't get our truck down there, we lost a life or we lost a family. You want to explain that to them? I don't think you do. So with that said, we've got...